We'll call it in order tonight's committee of the whole for the Auburn City Council meeting dated July the 22nd, 2025. The council should have the minutes from the committee of the whole from our July the 8th meeting. If there are any additions or corrections to those minutes, if not, is there a move to approve?
Second.
A motion of second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are carried forth. Greenspace Advisory Board, Mayor Pro Tim Whitten.
Yes, we have two vacancies. Terms begin August 8, 2025, and then August 7, 2029. Incumbents Jamie Brady and Arthur Chappelka have both served one full term and one partial. I would like to nominate for Jamie, James Brady's term, to renominate James Brady for a second full term.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to reappoint James Brady for a second full term. Any discussion, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries, and we'll confirm that later on in the agenda.
And for the spot currently held by Arthur Chappelka, I would like to nominate John Whitworth.
Second.
A nomination for John Whitworth. Any discussion, questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we'll confirm that later on in the agenda. We appreciate Art Chappelka's service to our community. Under planning commission tonight, we have two vacancies. These terms begin immediately and they end, the first vacancy will end July the 31st of next year, 2026, and the second one will end July the 31st of 2028. The incumbents are Wendy Birmingham and David Wisdom, who have both resigned for personal reasons and very, very grateful for Wendy and David and their service to the planning commission. So for my first nomination, this term would begin immediately and would end on July the 31st, 2026, I'd like to nominate Vanessa Echols.
Second.
Having motion and a second for Vanessa Echols. Any comments or questions, thoughts? Okay.
I think this bears some consideration. Ms. Echols brought forth a very strong resume. I like her association with this community. She's born here. I like her training in the journalistic field. She was a broadcaster at several networks, and I like her commitment to serve her hometown. I think she's an excellent candidate.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. All in favor of Vanessa Echols, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we will confirm Vanessa Echols later on in our agenda. And then the second nomination, this will be for a three-year term that will extend through July the 31st of 2028. I'd like to nominate Jennifer Laverne.
Second.
All right, have a motion and a second for Jennifer Laverne. Any comments or questions from the council? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries forth. I want to thank, we had seven applicants for these planning commission vacancies. Five of our citizens went through the interview process. I'm grateful for all seven who wanted to be a part of the planning commission. Those that were not selected, I encourage you to continue to look for opportunities to serve the community in different ways. And we, again, I want to thank Wendy and David for their service to our community through the planning commission. All right, questions on tonight's agenda. Are there any questions for the city manager? Okay, anything for us? Ms. Crouch?
No, sir.
Okay, is there a move to adjourn the committee of the whole?
There's a move.
All right, we are adjourned to committee of the whole. We'll get started in about a minute with the regular agenda. Okay, we'll call it ordered tonight's Auburn City Council meeting for July the 22nd, 2025. We welcome all of you that have joined us here live in the council chambers, as well as those that are listening through WANI and that are watching through our streaming services. Welcome to all of you. With the roll call, Lindsay?
Adams.
Here.
Coblenz.
Here.
Dawson.
Griswold. Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Whitten.
Here.
Anders.
Here. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Earlier tonight during the committee of the whole, the city council reappointed Jamie Brady to the Greenspace Advisory Board and appointed John Whitworth as a new member of the Greenspace Advisory Board. The city council also appointed Vanessa Echols to serve an expired term on the planning commission, as well as Jennifer Laverne, who also seems to be serving an unexpired term on the planning commission. Under announcements tonight, really quick, had an opportunity last week to go to the Chamber of Commerce and be a part of a Welcome to Auburn social. I would estimate there was 40 or 50 new families, new couples, new individuals who have moved to Auburn in the recent months. And it's really interesting to hear the stories of how people are ending up in our community, and they're really all over the place. And we certainly welcome those enthusiastic members of our community. Later on that evening, I was invited to be a part of the celebration of the Fuel Alabama Summer Internship Program that the City of Auburn facilitated with assistance of ADPA. And again, these are young students who are a year away from graduating from college that were shown many of the things about East Alabama and Auburn and Opelika. And we certainly encourage them to look for opportunities in our community. A great group of individuals and young students, and we appreciate them taking time this summer to learn about the cities of Auburn and Opelika. Anybody else have any type of announcement they'd like to? Yes, sir. Gavin?
Yes, thank you. Some of y'all noticed Chief Dawson's not here tonight. He and I spoke earlier, and I have some, some, some things I wanted to say, but he also asked me to chime in on, on some things about the police department and appreciation. And particularly the, the solving of the double murder recently and the child abduction, how quickly that came to fruition. Y'all did a fantastic job on that, and it was with the cooperation of the FBI and the marshal service. So that cooperation really feeds into the next thing I had to say, and that was I would like to express my appreciation for the cooperation shown by the police department in support of the recent federal task force that was active across the state. So thank you all for doing a fine job on keeping us safe. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I want to recognize a group of young athletes that break, brought just great pride and excitement to our city, the Auburn 11U All-Star Baseball Team. They were recently crowned the USSA, and maybe there's one more S in there, REC, All-Star World Series Champions. So these young men, they competed with great determination, sportsmanship, and a great level of teamwork. And while their performance on the field was exemplary, what impressed me though is just as much was the way they carried themselves off the field with humility, respect, and class, and they represented the very best of Auburn. So we should all be proud. I'd like to take a moment to recognize each of the players that made this achievement possible. So I'll read their names. Number two, Banks Murphy, Zachary Knight, Trey Pelham, Owen McKay, Luke Oliver, Park Moore, Joseph Miller, Rory Keen, my nephew Bowman Marshall, Malachi Maxwell, Nate Kimbrough, and Benjamin Segal. And I'd also like to recognize head coach Andrew McKay and assistant coaches Jerry Pelham and Ashley Miller for their leadership and mentorship over the season. And the parents and the family supporters, your dedication and sacrifices are a huge part of the team's success, and we thank you for the role that you played in making this possible. So on behalf of the city council and citizens of Auburn, congrats to our champions. You definitely made us proud, and I hope you enjoy the rest of your summer. Congrats, guys. Proud of you.
Good. Thank you, Max. Certainly congratulations, those young men. Thankful to their parents allowing them to be a part of that. Anyone else? Okay, Auburn University Communications.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Vera Smith T., and I'm serving as Executive Vice President of Outreach this year in SGA. I feel like I've been here a couple of times now, so I know your faces, which is so fun. But I'm here to give a report on behalf of Auburn University SGA. Camp Regal finished up this past Friday, actually a total completion of 12 sessions for the incoming freshman class, which is pretty incredible. Auburn University has begun construction on the Melton Student Center patio, and it's set to finish by November 2025, so in time for the Iron Bowl. The new space will include the addition of lounge areas, tiered seating on the event lawn, and some audiovisual elements. Auburn University is hosting an emergency response training session from noon to 4:00 PM on July 29th and 30th. Several parking lots, including the Neville Arena parking lot, as well as several roads, including parts of Donahue, will be closed during these hours for the training. But alternate parking in PC four and PC five lots will be available. Thank you all so much. I'm where you go.
Thank you, Vera. Okay, this, this time will be an opportunity for you to, to comment on items on tonight's agenda. This will be any item on the agenda tonight. We do have a couple items under resolutions, conditional uses that have public hearings attached. If you would like to speak to the council about either one of those items, please wait and hold your comments for that moment. But if you'd like to speak to the council about anything else on the agenda, now would be the time to come forward. And you have five minutes.
Yeah. One of those items you mentioned is not the salary raises, is it?
No.
Okay, thank you. My name is Robert Wilkins, 261 Denton Drive, Auburn, Alabama. ADEF, City Council, Mayor Pro Tim salary increase. I think that the salary increase for council members are way overdue, but still cannot understand why our mayor got his 188% salary increase approval in 2020 while our council members were totally left out. Myself and other Auburn citizens believe that the council, instead of a much-needed increase in salary, should be considering the council position to be full-time. Many of the Auburn citizens believe the city manager and her management staff have too much control over our city council because of the lack of time needed to understand the complexity of its growth and need of the Auburn city. I believe that if the council considers full-time, that likely only probably four of you would consider running again because of your investment in your current jobs. I put up two different surveys, and I've mentioned them before, on nextdoor.com 32 weeks ago. One of the questions was, should our city council member get a raise? With four choices, I gave them. One was to increase to $24,000. 20% agreed with that. Increased to $18,000, 14% of them did. And then 15% increased to $12,000 per year. So y'all are right in the, the right mix of it. 50% said stay at $7,200 per year. But 16 weeks later, that changed. It was a little different question, too, but it said increase $600 to $1,200 per month. 32% said that. But 30% said make the city council full-time. 17% said they didn't care. And then another choice was keep the salary the same was only 21%. So in 16 weeks, it went from 50% to 21%. So the raise is very, very important. I appreciate Councilman Parsons putting the effort in and getting council members raises, but put on the agenda today. I believe just as Councilman Parsons stated at Committee of the Whole meeting, that this will increase the number of candidates for council members who may need supplemental income in order to run. I believe competition can produce even better candidates for the city of Auburn. I want to thank Councilman Griswold for his military service and Councilman Dawson for his service to the Auburn community. But I cannot understand both of y'all's selfish approach to the raise by not considering the needs of others. It reminds me of both of your votes on ordinance 3288. Short-term rental was selfish also. Councilman Dawson, you stated at the same committee of the whole this July the 8th, I'm not in favor of a pay raise. I respect everyone's opinion and make a compelling argument for it. I can understand that. I do it for free. I love what Auburn has done for me, and it's my pleasure to serve. And the only thing I would say about it, if you do it for the money, you're doing it for the wrong reasons. Then Councilman Griswold stated, I agree with Chief Dawson. You know, I think Auburn is special, and we're unique. And like Chief said, I'd be doing this for free. In fact, I thought it was for free when the first time I first got elected. But I didn't really want somebody representing me who gets incentivized by money. I do not think this is necessary at this point. I hope that Councilman Dawson and Councilman Griswold either turned down your salaries or gave the $7,200 per year to charity during this tenure so far. If either of you take the salary, then your words to me have very little meaning. But as a council, if you really should be considering your position full-time, this would continue to make Auburn that special place that Councilman Griswold spoke about at the committee of the whole. Vote yes on 8F.
Who'll be next?
Susan Bolt, 1188 East University Drive. I spoke before this council in January of 2024 and asked about the process for members to get a raise because I believed it was needed then. So a year and a half later, here we are. I believed a raise was in order then, and I still believe it today. I appreciate the time each of you spend on the city business and speaking with citizens like me. With an increase in pay, there is also an expectation of more access and more value. I would like to suggest that this council instruct the city manager and her staff to take measures to inform Auburn citizens, not only of the raise for the position of city council member, but also the expectations and time obligations of being a council member. Advertise in the various city publications such as Open Line, social media, and other avenues already being used. With municipal elections growing closer, a campaign to inform potential candidates of their expectations might prove helpful. For instance, the mayor is expected to meet with citizens when citizens have concerns. The mayor refused to meet with me because he says I attacked his character. That just isn't a true statement. I come to the podium with facts about events that have occurred, and how one reacts to the facts is their responsibility. One might also justify a pay increase related to training. Training requires time and should be compensated. In April of 2023, and again in January of 2024, I requested that this council expand their training topics, and I provided to each of you my suggestions. I was disappointed that my idea was ignored. However, our state legislature leaders recently saw the need and passed the Alabama Municipal Official Training Act that became law in May of 2024. I encourage you now, as a council, to take measures to limit the expenses that will be incurred by this act by passing standards of implementation and limiting travel expenses. In fact, why don't you implement a no-travel policy for training or require online training only? Training now will cost the city more than if you had implemented a training program on your own. And the league of municipalities will now dictate the training regiment that will be geared more to the needs of the city than the needs of the citizen. Also, this act does not sanction those council members who don't complete training. Now would be a good time to make training mandatory as well. There are still other areas of training to be addressed. Treatment of some speakers at city council, proper use of Robert's Rules of Order, decisions being based on law, the Constitution, and fairness instead of emotions. Some emotional or inconsistent decisions that, that I have seen are ordinance 3288, which was based on emotion, double standards, discrimination, and it was unconstitutional. The Cherry Street addition altered the zoning category and therefore building height and setbacks, changing the appearance of the neighborhood. Yet the STR 5 falsely claimed the STR hosts were changing the appearance of our neighborhoods. The grocery store and liquor store at Donahue and Highway 14, where you didn't allow a liquor store because the drinkers and revelers in the nearby church parking lot. But now Stevens Station has put approximately 25 RV parking lots for game day right next door. What do you think they will be doing next to the church? Citizens like me have high expectations of our mayor and council members. While I don't agree with all of your decisions, I do believe that each councilman brings a useful perspective to the table. While some of you will not benefit from this increase because it starts next term, I hope improvements can continually be made to the process to serve Auburn citizens. I am in favor of the increase and want each council member to be constant, compensated fairly for their time. Thank you for your service.
Who'll be next? Anyone? Okay, we'll move ahead with city managers' communications.
Mayor, I don't have any city managers' communications this evening. Are you ready for the consent agenda?
Please.
Our first item of business is a consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the current consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to remove item 8F, Foxtrot.
8F, all right. Anyone else?
Yes, I'd like to remove item 8C. 8 Charlie, please.
8C, good. All right, anyone else? Okay, 8, 8C.
Item 8C, restructure as a housing rehabilitation loan with Dorothy Conway for property located at 1137 Wrightsmill Road.
May for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Griswold?
Thank you. This is to restructure a 20-year, no-interest loan. And correct me if I'm wrong, but no principal payments have been made toward this loan so far. Is that correct?
So this was a deferred loan, no principal payments were required to be made.
All right, so over a 20-year period, no attempt or no, no payments, even though were not required, have been asked for or offered by the, by the recipient.
This is a low and moderate income deferred mortgages for people defined as elderly or disabled, and so, yeah.
Understand that. When someone repays one of these loans, that is money that we have available to put back into the community to help another person who might be in the same situation.
That goes into our affordable housing program and can, can go back in. These are federal funds that were given to the city through the Community Development Block Grant Program, once we became an entitlement city.
Thank you. What confidence do we have that extension of a 20-year no-interest loan for another 10 years at no interest, what confidence do we have that we will ever see a return? It's not a, not a return on our investment, but a return on the funds that we have put into this program that could be used for other needy people in the near term?
It's secured by the property on Wrightsmill Road that is worth more than the loan. And so it, it also is, if the person that is signing the note cannot pay it, it runs with the land. The heirs are required to pay it back. And so we will recover our funds over time.
Okay, you mentioned in your email response to me about this that there would be an offer to the family to make periodic payments towards this principal.
That's correct.
Is that in the agreement?
No, this is still a deferred loan for 10 years because it's in the name of, of the loan holder. So the family has indicated a willingness to repay, and the actual property owner herself has sent us a letter today in writing stipulating she's going to start making monthly payments, but it is not required by this documentation. Again, you're talking about people that have limited income, and in the event that she cannot make regular monthly payments, it's meant to be a life estate so she could live out her life in her home and, and till such time as she can't live there. And if the property is deeded to somebody else in her family, that it will be repaid by them. So there isn't a, a monthly loan payment, although she is requesting or has indicated an email that she would like to start making small payments that are affordable for her on this loan.
Okay, without some kind of assurance that this money will eventually be paid back to the city or to the federal account, so are the, the housing program, I'm reluctant to support another 10 years zero-interest loan. We've already had 20 years with an opportunity to repay this $52,000 loan. Again, zero interest for 20 years.
There's a mortgage on the property, so the property would become the city's. The city will recover its money.
If you'd let me finish, I'd appreciate it. So anyway, there's, there's been no effort or no, no assurance to repay this. And so by extending this for another 10 years, that $52,000 continues on for a period of time until we have something in writing, some assurance that there'll be some payments toward the principal. So I'm reluctant to, to agree to a 10-year extension on something that we've had 20 years to work on.
Okay, I think that I, I don't understand what is not clear in the paperwork. There's a mortgage. The property is worth more than the $52,000 mortgage. The city's money is secure. There is no other debt on the property. So the city will get its funds back. These are deferred loans. Payments are not required by the property owner. Period, per the documents. So the property owner's been in compliance for the last 20 years. And again, the goal of the program is to recycle money to help others, but not to get somebody kicked out of their home in an elderly state because they can't afford payments. The goal was to have a nice place to live, an acceptable place for the remainder of their life.
I appreciate that.
I appreciate that. And the fact that we have the family stepping up to try to bounce to cover this indicates to me that we're not at risk of kicking someone out of their home. We have a family willing and able to step up and take care of this individual.
Ms. Crouch, the deferred loan program is a federal program through the Community Development Block Grant?
It is a program approved. I'll have Mr. Davis go into more of that. We approved this program in the early 2000s with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This program is replicated all over the country and is very common in deferred loan situations. What we couldn't do is draft a full-life estate for somebody, which is what we wanted to do. We had to have a financial term. But we planned, and some of these are coming early, that it is, the woman residing in the home is 89 years old, and I'm grateful that she's still with us on this earth. But we feel strongly as a staff, it's certainly up to the council, that if she wants to remain in her home, we need to find a way to help her do that. We're not at risk at not getting our funds. And believe me, legally, and you're dealing with another situation right now, we will, when somebody else owns the property, funds are due and payable. Mr. Davis?
It really has been a great program because it's kept so many people in their homes. And this home was not quite like most of our rehab loans that run between, you know, 15,000 and 20,000. This house was in such bad shape that we literally had to reconstruct this house. Basically, we rebuilt the house so the homeowner could remain in the house. Now, they have done a great job with this house over the 20 years. While they have not been paying back this loan, they have taken care of this house very well. The one plus we have going forward with the 10-year extension we're requesting is the families have come together. They realize that they want to retire this loan, and so, they are anxious to begin to make payments to retire it. They certainly don't want it to go past another 10 years. And so, they have decided that they are going to help make regular payments on this loan. But we are thankful that the homeowner is still in the household. She's still able to live in her house and hopefully be able to live her life out in her house. And that was the whole purpose of the deferred loan program in the first place.
Now, with the family making payments, so they're still not required to do so, that's something I want to do.
They're not required. It is still under deferred status. They don't have to do that. But most individuals in our program do make steps to try to retire the loans. And most of them don't have, all of them, don't have incomes that would have afforded them the opportunity to pay regular monthly payments. But they do do what they can, and this family is willing to do that even though they're not required.
Thank you.
Can I ask a clarification question? Does the city have any money in this loan?
The city of Auburn, general fund money, no. It's Community Development Block Grant funding only.
It's a federal grant.
Yeah, we're not allowed to use general fund for this purpose.
Right. So, what I'm asking is, is this federal money or is this city money?
It's federal money.
Okay. So, we don't have any dollars from the general fund or any other fund?
No, sir. And we must use this fund, these funds, to impact low and moderate-income families in Auburn.
Right. Thank you.
This home is in Ward 6, and I'm very grateful that there's such a program that allows people with limited means of income to live out their lives in dignity. And I'm grateful that this extension has happened. Thank you.
I drive by this house regularly going to Auburn Early Ed, and I agree with Mr. Davis. It has been kept up very well. And secondly, and looking at this today, I did a quick research on valuation of home in that area. I think it would easily, obviously easily cover what our mortgage payment, or what our mortgage amount is of 52,000. I think it's obviously worth a lot more than that. So, I feel like funds are very secure in what we have here. There's no obligation for her to make payments per the promissory note that she signed. Obviously, it's in deferred status. So, I don't have any problem extending this for a little longer, knowing, you know, our position in the property is very well secured and very much valued well over the fact of what the mortgage amount is. I don't think we have any issue recurring those, recouping those costs, you know, at some point down the road. And if she's in a position to pay some of that early, that's fine. But if not, I understand the situation that we're in.
You know, we live in a town that has citizens of all ages and stages and places. And I think it's incumbent upon us as the leaders of this community to increase our toolbox if we need to, to try to help as many people as possible where they are. And I'm certainly grateful that there's this program that we can access, that doesn't take away from what we would use general fund money to do on a normal course of business for the city, but as a manner that we can assist those, that there's accountability there. Because they understand when they get involved in the program that there's going to be an expectation that this will be taken care of. But we can allow them to respectfully live there at this time of their life. And so, I'm very thankful that we have an opportunity to do this. And I also know Ms. Conway and grew up with some of her children, and I'm glad that at her place in life, she can have a great place to live. Anyone else?
Yeah. And I want to say too that I'm thankful for the program, the rehabilitation loan program. It's been around a while, and I don't know if people really know that it does help people who cannot afford, and especially when people get older, they don't fix income, they have some type of disability. So, you know, it's a blessing to be able to help somebody. And I'm glad that this federal program enables people with those type of conditions to, you know, carry on and be able to live. And I know, and I'm thinking this is Kenny Conway? Okay, okay. I'm thinking that's his mom or grandmom? Probably his mom.
I thought it would be his mom.
Okay. And so, you know, I'm just thankful, and I'm quite sure that the family is also thankful. And it's a blessing that the other family want to come in and assume the loan, which they don't have to. So, I'm in favor of doing, you know, agreeing with, keeping this going.
Let's vote to restructure Ms. Conway's loan, though.
All right. We've got a motion. A second.
I still have some more discussion, please.
Okay.
Please. Yeah. And I have no qualms with the program. I think the program is fantastic. It's done a lot of great things. And my concern was that the property was not being, the loan was not being secured. And I've been convinced from our banker friend down there on the far end and others that it is secured. And the good news is that the family is willing to step up and make some interim payments between now and the next 10 years. So, hopefully, this money can be reused to help other people who are in need. That was my objective, is to have the funds available for other people. So, okay.
Okay. We have a motion. A second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And the motion carries.
Item 8F authorizes a salary of $1,250 per month for city council members and $1,500 per month for the mayor pro temp effective at the start of the next city councillor term on or about November 1, 2026.
May for approval.
Second. We have a motion. A second. Mr. Parsons?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I wanted to pull this off the consent agenda so that the public could hear this discussion ongoing during the committee of the whole. We weren't unanimous in this decision, so it's important to me that we make sure that the public are aware of how we got to where we are. The last time that the city council was compensated, their compensation raised was in 2006. So, in 2026, when the incoming council comes into, is seated, this raise, this compensation raise would take place, making it 20 years since they last had any kind of compensation raised. We were given a lot of comparative documents about what other cities in the state of Alabama compensate their council members. And a general rough average of comparable cities came in at around 17,000 per year. The Big Ten cities, the average is around, which Auburn is one of them, the average came in at around 24,000. So, I, in keeping with a generally conservative outlook in this city, I suggested the amount be 15,000 per year, which translates to 1250 per month for city council members, and an $18,000 compensation for mayor pro temp because the pro temp role takes up significantly more time than regular council members. And that compensation be 18,000, which comes around to 15,000, 1,500 per month.
Good. Thank you, Bob. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Griswold.
Yeah, I'm always the one, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, the previous speaker said something about how the council was left behind when the mayor received an increase. That's not correct. The council made a conscious decision at that time not to give themselves or the following iteration a raise. So, that was just a clarification there. And I don't understand how more money is going to give you more access to council members. That's certainly not the case. I don't think anybody up here is lacking of an effort to maintain contact with the citizenry and is slow to respond. So, I think more money doesn't equal more access. And I think there's some folks that desire for a full-time council members. I think there might be some ulterior motives in there. I'm not sure. But as Chief Dawson and I both said during the committee of the whole last time around, you know, neither of us support a raise. We both think that this is a public service, and I do not want someone representing me who is motivated by money. I want people up here that are motivated by the desire to serve the city of Auburn. So, I know the chief is not here tonight. He asked me to mention that that is his opinion as well. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Senator. Thank you for the time. I support the mayor's pay, by the way. I don't want his job. I'm thrilled that he does it for what we pay him, and God bless him for that. I would not support full-time council members. This is, I can't even imagine this being a career for somebody. A political stepping stone, maybe, but a full-time career, I just can't see it. But I do think several of our members are sacrificing at a very high level by giving up time with their children, by giving up time away from their full-time job. And I think this might be meaningful for that portion of our group. So, I support it on that level for those reasons. Nobody wants to talk about this. That's why it has gone for 20 years roughly with no pay increase because it has come up reluctantly, and it has been voted down several times. People don't do this for money. People don't even want to talk about it. And as Councilman Griswold said, many of us didn't even know there was a salary. So, I think the motivation is sound. I don't think that the pay increase proposal is too far out of line. I don't think it's grandiose. I think that it's a fair amount. It's not something I really lose sleep over. I don't care, but I think it might be beneficial and warranted for some of the people who may want to serve, who have small children, full-time jobs, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I just want to say that I appreciate this salary increase for the next council that coming up. But I don't think it even, just say, if I run again and make it, it ain't like it's enough money for me to quit my job. So, but I do appreciate it. And, you know, any little bit help, even a $600 a month helped. So, I just, you know, appreciate that somebody wanted to consider, or this council wanted to consider, the next council that comes up because it's long past due. And serving two terms and doing it for the amount that we was getting, the $7,200, I don't think it was about the money. I truly don't. So, to get an increase, it's not going to make us or break us. I'll be at Tuskegee because it's not going to, it'll break me if I, really, if I quit my job for $15,000 a year. So, I just want to say that.
Thank you, Connie. Anyone else?
Well, I'm certainly grateful for the men and women that have chosen to be elected officials in our community. I can tell all of you that are with us tonight and all there listening and watching, you know, we don't always agree, as you've seen already, and you'll probably see later. But I can promise you that everybody up here works hard, and they're attentive to the people that they represent, which in today's Auburn is about 10,000 folks. And it's a big job. And it's a bigger job than it was in 2006 just because there's more to do. There's more people to respond to. Social media and the way we communicate is certainly much greater and different than it was 20 years ago. And the expectations have just been changed. And so, these people up here work hard, and I'm proud to serve with them. And I believe that they will earn this increase if this were to pass tonight.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. We've got a motion. A second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One nay. All right. I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda.
Does it move?
Motion. A second. Any further questions, comments? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda is approved. Resolutions?
I'll just note that we have no ordinances this evening. So, resolutions. Item 10A1 is a request for conditional use approval of a commercial and entertainment use event space as a component of a mixed-use development to be located at 1027 East Glen Avenue in the Corridor Redevelopment District, East Zoning District. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its July 10 meeting and included a condition that any event that requires overflow parking requires a contract to be presented to staff. A public hearing is required.
May for approval.
Second. All right. We have a motion. In a second. Normally, we would go straight to a public hearing at this point in time. The city manager, is this, I know there's, I know Councilman Adams, it's in his ward, he'd like to...
The council may ask questions or do anything they wish prior to opening a public hearing.
Okay. So, before we go to the public hearing, all right. So, is any...
Yes.
Mr. Adams, I know you have a few.
Yes, I do have a few questions related specifically to the condition that planning commission put on this with related to overflow parking. Reading through this, it's not clear that there's, that there is adequate parking. Could you address that? Is there adequate parking for this?
Yeah, certainly. So, there are three uses on site. So, there is the residential uses, there's the restaurant uses, and y'all, what's before y'all is the event space use. And so, the three uses cumulatively require 164 parking spaces. There are 187 parking spaces on site. So, by ordinance, it is overparked by about 23 parking spaces. And so, to break those down, there are 92 parking spaces required for the residential side, which was approved earlier this year. And then, there are 38 spaces required for the event space, 33 spaces required for the restaurant space. And so, for the restaurant space and for the event space, both of those numbers are derived from the square footage of each space. And so, the square footage for the restaurant space is 5,000. The square footage for the event space is 15,000. And so, like I said, based on the square footage of each space is what those parking numbers are derived from.
Justice, was that 3,700 or so for the event space? It's in a 15,000-square-foot building?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. There we go.
3,000, whatever it was. There we go. Just want to clarify.
So, there's roughly 38 parking spots that are, that would be allocated to the event space? Is that...
Yeah, certainly, yeah.
All right. What would be the capacity of the event space? What is the...
I wouldn't be able to speak to the capacity of it. That's more of a codes thing. But for me, I guess what I look at is just kind of the square footage of it, and then that's how we get to the parking. And I guess I didn't, I guess I didn't answer your question just kind of about the condition necessarily. But I guess in, even though it says just kind of any event overflowing, we have other standing agreements in other places in town where if there is overflow parking or parking that they cannot satisfy on-site, they do get a contract to satisfy up to the number of parking that they would be required. And so, it would just kind of be a broad place where they had a broad agreement that covered, hey, if there ever is an event where we do exceed our parking on-site, here's where our shared parking would be at this location, this number of parking spots, et cetera. That would just kind of be a standard agreement that they would have, that the staff would be aware of. So, I just wanted to address what the condition meant and how it would operate.
Okay. How would that condition be? How would that condition be enforced?
Yeah. So, currently, there's business downtown. They have offsite parking. And I guess currently, right now, they're actually doing a renovation where they're going to lose two parking spaces. The contract that is in place where they have the offsite parking has to be updated, and they need to show that they have an increase of two parking spaces in the shared location. and they need to show that they have an increase of two parking spaces in the shared location that are always available for them to park extra cars there to satisfy their parking requirements. And so that is something that we do verify, that we do check with, like, through inspections, et cetera. And so, like I said, they present us the agreement. We see a site plan where the parking spaces are. And then we also verify if they have any parking issues, and that is something that we do fall back on.
Per event, or do you say this one time?
So with this one, this is just the set number of parking for them to meet their parking minimum that they needed this contract. And so it is something that we see at the one time. Like I said, on this one, they are going through a current renovation that is going to require them to update that. And we need a new contract, a new site plan that will be verified with staff.
Okay.
Councilman Adams, you could also, if you're concerned, you can clarify the condition. If you want, if you want it redrafted at all, where the condition itself is probably, while we're talking about how it works in all practicality, the actual condition may confuse people. And so if you need that drafted differently, we can certainly do that at the pleasure of the council.
I believe that throughout that I would like to go, just from a conceptual standpoint. I'm on board with going in that direction. I just want to make sure that we address potential overflow parking. Because just looking at the numbers, it looks like, you know, if they have an event, that there will be opportunities for them to have more people, more vehicles there than they do parking spots at the time. And I'd like to make sure that we don't end up having folks parking on Cherry Street.
Certainly. And I guess kind of this zona district does have a cap on the amount of parking that can be shared on another property. And so in section five thirteen, it talks about, must be on an adjacent property. And I guess they also can request less, but that's not what we're here to talk about. So the shared parking, they can only share up to twenty percent of their required parking. So I guess if we were to acquire it as a whole, I mean, we can get to that number and what that would be. But it has to be on an adjacent site. So pretty much if they wanted to either use part of Kroger's or a part of that strip shopping center that is facing Glen, they'd be able to do that. Those are the only locations that would be viable for a shared parking agreement. And it'd be up to twenty, it'd be a twenty percent increase of what their number is.
I think that, I think I would like to have an opportunity to step back from this and have staff clarify that condition. We can put something in place that may work a little bit better. I do want to go ahead and say that as far as this entire development goes, it's actually, it's, it's actually a very exciting development. We're going to be bringing in a Carvelas Pizza there. And then there's a proposed event space. And we have a local business that's going to have their offices on the second floor. I think it will be very well done. Overall, I'm in favor of it. I simply want to make sure that we take the time to get this condition right and then move forward with it.
Councilman Adams, also to your point, our inspection services director said, based on square footage, we need to talk to the applicant. But based on square footage and configuration of an event, it could be two to four hundred people. They may be intending for less than that, but we need to have some more dialogue with the applicant, per your question. And we can also get you some more information on that. That helps us determine a little bit more about parking.
Absolutely. So procedurally, would I make a motion now to postpone this to, I guess, a date certain? I feel like the first council meeting in September would be acceptable. Does that?
We can probably be ready, defer to the planning director, faster than that.
Yeah, I'd say the second meeting in August would be fine for me.
Or second, yes, August, sorry. Second meeting in August.
So that would put you at the August nineteenth meeting.
Right.
You'd like to postpone to the August nineteenth meeting? Is that a motion?
We got a motion.
A motion and second. Any discussion on that?
And will the public hearing follow that for the, when we see it again on the nineteenth?
Yes, it will, if you don't open it tonight, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? All right, we have a motion and second to move this to the August nineteenth meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries, and we'll see this again on August nineteenth.
Item ten A two is a request for conditional use approval of a performance residential development, a multi-unit development located at one three nine seven North Dean Road in the Comprehensive Development District, zoning district. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its July tenth meeting. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. This time, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council on this, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. And you have five minutes to speak to the council. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And I know that the developer's rep is here, right, if we have any questions. Ms. Crouch, this is the third time that we've been asked to approve a development at this location, correct?
I believe so. I'll have our planning director speak to that.
Am I going?
There we go.
That, yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Extensions here and there, yes.
Yeah, and so the density has not increased from the first iteration to now the third iteration. Is that correct?
No, that, that's correct. I think there's been substantial changes, I think, in the design. The design is substantially different than what's been approved before.
As far as the area there, how many years has this been? Three or four years since?
Yeah, three or four years.
I know there's been improvements to the intersection there with East University and Dean Road. Anything else that you can think of as far as that area there, that is there density?
It's actually been five years in the making.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so if you've noticed, there is a difference in the floodplain. And so the past floodplain, we recently updated a floodplain for two thousand and twenty-five. And so then the last iteration of the plan, they carved out the most northern part of the property to kind of avoid the floodplain. And so this one, they recently had to redo the site plan and the configuration of the buildings to accommodate the updated floodplain that had increased on the northern end of the property due to the creek. So that is the, I would say that is the only substantial change outside of the actual structures that they plan to build.
Mayor, you were asking, we have made some improvements to North Dean Road and East University Drive recently that are slated in the city engineer. Correct me if I'm wrong, but there's double left turns on both sides of that intersection. But the North Dean Road just past this does terminate. It's planned to be extended, but we don't know when that will happen.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the council?
Is there a difference between a build-to-rent complex versus a build-to-sell complex? The only reason I ask that is the map specifically says this is a build-to-rent conceptual plan. So is something in?
Yeah, certainly. So I guess kind of what you would see would be public streets, and it'd be fee simple townhomes or fee simple structures, pretty much. But this is an M U D, so all of these buildings are on one lot. And they're not going to be sold that way through going individual places of land. So all that would look like is just on paper, it would be fee simple and someone would be able to own a piece of land, essentially.
Okay, and the internal road structures, the construction that will be necessary to service all of these homes, is that something that the city would eventually take charge of?
No, no, no. So, yeah, yeah, so this is private. And so pretty much, this is a massive parking lot. Looking at it, it's concrete and all that. It's essentially just a massive parking lot.
Yeah, it's an excellent question in that the private roads are not the city's responsibility. Sometimes the council asks, though, and you have on townhome developments before. You know, it confuses the public because it looks like a public street, but we don't maintain it.
Okay.
And you've got some interesting ones in your ward that are a little bit of both.
Thank you.
Is trash service collected in one location on this property? Or will we be required to go in and collect it individual units?
So be a D R T situation?
Yeah, that'd be a D R T thing, but I imagine on situations like this, we don't collect, so.
Is there a way to?
It'd be a private collector, yeah.
Okay.
I don't believe environmental services at the conditional use level has had an opportunity to review it yet, correct, Katrina? And it's something that they'll look at. It's not our desire in these tight spaces to provide that service because back to our ability to pick up carts with cars parked everywhere is, so we would push them heavily for the larger commercial service.
Yeah, and so there are three compacters on the current site plan, I guess, on the updated site plan. But yeah, that'd be a private collector, and I guess there are three different trash compactors.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other questions? Any questions for the developer's representative? He's here. We have any questions for him? Okay. All right. We got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item ten B adopts the Community Development Block Grant twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine Consolidated Plan, the twenty twenty-five Annual Action Plan, and the twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine Citizen Participation Plan.
Move for approval. Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions from the council? There's no public hearing attached to this.
It's, there's a lot of good work that goes on in this program. Could we have Mr. Davis?
Absolutely.
Just speak to it and give us a brief overview of where this money is going, where it comes from and where it's going?
Certainly will. We are very pleased to be a grantee of HUD, which means that we get annual allocations. So we don't have to compete for the funding. We receive an annual allocation from HUD. We do have, however, have to complete an annual action plan. That's one of the things we do have to do to detail how we're going to spend our annual appropriation. The consolidated plan, which is an item that we're presenting tonight, is very important as part of this process because every five years, the city must complete a consolidated plan. The consolidated plan will lay out for the community, it will lay out, define for us what type of activities that we plan to offer over that five-year period. We look at market analysis. We look at needs analysis. That plan must be heavily involved the public input. This time, this plan was so year in the makings. So we've been working on the consolidated plan for a little over a year. It's received a tremendous amount of public input. We had two stakeholder meetings where the community was able to come in and give their input on not only the process, but the priorities that we established. We had six public hearings. HUD only requires three, but we always do more. We've met with twenty agencies, local agencies and organizations to get their input on the plan. We've met with some six of our faith-based partners in the community, met with various cities' departments, had a community survey. So there's a lot of input that goes into the planning for the consolidated plan and also for the action plan. We also have public hearings for the action plan. We take applications and we then make allocations based on the applications we receive. This, the first year and each year, like I said, you have to have an action plan. They do require the first action plan to be part of the consolidated plan submission. So when we submit this consolidated plan to HUD, we will also submit the twenty twenty-five action plan. We have received our funding allocation for HUD for FY twenty-five. I do remind the council that our C D B G program is a little bit different fiscal year from ours. Our fiscal year runs from June first to May thirty-first. So it's an unusual fiscal year. It don't line up with ours. But we have received our allocation for the first year of this new consolidated plan. Seven hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars is what we received this time. We really spread our dollars out. We have done this. Even when this program was in economic development, it was always good about spreading our dollars out so we can reach as many entities in the community that we can that support our low-mod community. In this action plan for twenty-five, we have funding set aside for affordable housing program. We can either build a house if we can find some property or we will look at doing something a little bit different this time, doing some second mortgages for first-time low-mod income homeowners. So either way, we will have an affordable housing component. We have funds allocated for housing rehabilitation. While we don't do housing rehabilitation in-house anymore, we do have two wonderful partners, the Presbyterian Community Ministry, P C M, and Alabama Rural Ministry. We provide funding through those organizations to provide housing rehabilitation. You will notice in this year's FY twenty-five budget, we have allocated some fifty thousand dollars to P C M. They do great rehabilitation work. And they take these funds, stretch them a long way because they combine them with their dollars. Alabama Rural Ministry equally does good work. They just pull in all of their wonderful volunteers and they're able to do a whole lot with a little because they are able to use so many volunteers. So the housing rehab is shifted from the city to our partners. And then we fund a number of public service activities. Now HUD limits how many dollars that we can put into public service. We can only allocate fifteen percent of the HUD allocation to public service activities. And that range from everything from utility and rental assistance and mortgage assistance to homeless assistance programs that we have for those individuals that may find themselves homeless and need some temporary housing, to childcare support services where we support Auburn, Deacon, Joyland, and others after school programs like you. We will have with my brother, I'm my brother's keeper in true deliverance and the Boys and Girls Club. As runs a house, we support them, sports vouchers, food bank. All of those are considered public services. And so we're limiting on how much of the dollars we can spend on that, but we support a lot of agencies. We allocate funds for public infrastructure projects. In this FY twenty-five budget, we have funds set aside to resurface Pleasant Avenue. It has to be in a low-mod area. So we pick infrastructure projects in a low-mod area, and this time, we will take on resurfacing Pleasant Avenue. Funds are allocated for economic development activities. We work with Phillips Office on that in the section one oh eight program. And finally, we do allocate some dollars for administration of the program. Again, HUD puts a cap on that. We can't exceed twenty percent. So we feel real good about our C D B G program and what it does for the low-mod income community in Auburn and helps just a wide array of individuals through numerous organizations. We realize that we can't do this alone. And what we have is some wonderful community partners that join with us to provide services for our low-mod income community.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you for my great report.
I want to ask, let me ask you a question. You said this year, y'all received seven hundred and two thousand plus?
Yes.
Have it, is this the annual amount every year or it can vary?
It varies.
Okay.
It's actually been going down.
It's going down. It's going down a lot over the years.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to ask. I do understand that the money is, you know, I don't know if you can answer this, but why do the money go down? Because there's, there's need. There's a great need.
That's a great question to ask your congressional delegation. It's funded through Congress, and so that's a great question to ask next time you talk to them.
Yeah, it ebbs and flows. It's pushed a million dollars, pretty dang close to it, and going down here. And so it is challenging. It's, we get what we get, and we don't get a ton of notification for it. We are grateful for what we get and we make it the most out of it. I think it's important, as has come out earlier, is we can use this for things we cannot use general fund for, especially relative to affordable housing, utility assistance and those things. So even though it's less than we would like to get, we're grateful.
Yeah. Well, that's understandable. It goes beyond you. So once y'all submit the applications and everything, they determine whoever determines the amount.
We don't have to submit an application for our funding. That's determined at HUD level and, of course, with Congress, what Congress appropriate for the program.
Okay.
Once our population exceeded fifty thousand people is when we started getting annual allocations. We operated in the many years prior to that, we used a lot of these funds to pave roads in Northwest Auburn that weren't paved, to provide sewer to places that didn't have it. That came from allocations that the federal government gave the state that we applied for. But now we're not eligible for a lot of those unless it's an unusual circumstance like COVID. We only get our allocation as an entitlement city.
And I see that you, y'all are going to be resurfacing Pleasant Avenue. Do you know when that's going to start?
Not yet. We work with engineering on that phase of the project, but we can let you know when we get to that point.
Okay. And one other question. The homeless, you say you set aside money for homeless. What percentage of that do you set aside for homelessness? And when you say homeless, how is that classified?
Well, our approach is for many years have been to focus on homeless prevention. And that means, that's why you see so many dollars set aside for utility, rental assistance, mortgage assistance. We figure we can keep people in their homes or we can keep them off the streets. And so the focus, as you can see, we allocate quite a few dollars for that. Now, individuals that do find themselves in a state of homelessness, and we have people that that happens to. They have domestic violence in the household, well, they have family dispute or sometimes we just have people come to this community. When that happens, we do have funds set aside. When that happens, we do have funds set aside, not necessarily a percentage, but a dollar amount you see listed that we can provide temporary housing at one of the local hotels for several nights. That's when we work with our partners. Sometime we'll work with several churches. If it's a family with children that needs some housing for a week or so. We can do so many days and we work with our partners, they do so many days. So we work together and try to address the issue of homelessness. Again, no one entity can deal with that. So it requires a community effort and we work with our partners to try to address the situation of homelessness.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question, comment?
I would like to make a comment. In preparing for this topic tonight, I've learned a lot and I'm sure we all have. And I thank you for your comprehensive answer to the questions. My going-in opinion was that it was just a loan program, like the topic that we covered earlier about Wright's Mall Road. And this is so much wider ranging and complex than after we've gotten into it than I could have imagined. So thank you for doing a great job administering the program and for breaking down how much of it is public service activities, which I guess are grants. It's money that you don't expect back. And resurfacing, we didn't get a percent on that, but that's expensive. So it makes up a reasonable percentage of the dollars. And the reason that it's called Community Development Block Grant is because it covers a wide range of things. It's a block of things or topics. And the money is granted to this city based on population and other factors. And then some of it we loan out, some of it we use to, as capital projects and some of it we gift in a philanthropic way. And what a good program. I've learned to appreciate that based on your answer and the things that we've learned here tonight. So thank you.
Anyone else? We got a motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
An MC authorizes a tax abatement for Korea Fuel Tech America Incorporated, located at 272 Technology Parkway, for the acquisition of new equipment. The company plans to invest approximately $4 million and anticipates hiring 17 new employees.
Move for approval. I have a motion second. Megan, I'd like to ask our economic development guru over here a question, is that okay?
Absolutely, Mr. Dunlap can approach the microphone.
You know, Mr. Dunlap.
He wants to get out of his chair, look at him.
I understand.
I really appreciate that, he needed to stand up.
Yeah, Mr. Dunlap, it's almost commonplace that every, almost every meeting, there's somebody that's expanding and doing something. And it doesn't receive the same fanfare as a new company making an announcement to come to our community, but it's just a prouder moment because they're making a conscious decision to expand in Auburn. How many expansions have we had this year and what does that look like going forward for the rest of the calendar year?
I believe that's around seven since that you approved this fiscal year so far. We typically, we work on a, we have a very extensive BRNE program. And what that is, is business retention and expansion. So we visit these companies on a regular basis. We have a relationship with them. We create an atmosphere with the industrial base that when they want to do an expansion, they call us, talk to us, we look at how can we assist them and can we provide an incentive to help them do an expansion. Tax abatement is a great incentive. Why? Because it is an incentive you provide of funds you don't currently receive and you won't get unless they make the expansion. So you have to think about that. It's not, you're not giving away anything. What you're doing is simply allowing them to utilize instead of paying a certain percentage of ad valorem to take that and then save it and invest it in equipment to create jobs. Schools don't get abated. The hospital doesn't get abated, the children's home doesn't get abated. So I think that's a great program and we've consistently done that over the years. So it's a very good program. So yes, fanfare, we always get a lot of publicity when we have a big ribbon cutting and announcement. But really, the true bread and butter of a successful economic development program are the expansions. We now have over 50 companies in our industrial parks, our tech parks. And so that's why you see on a consistent basis, somebody expanding. Once you recruit that kind of base, you're going to continually having that support, you're going to continue to have that expansion. So in effect, you build in your own expansion, your own growth in these companies.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Sure.
All right, any questions, thoughts? Got a motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Mayor, we have no other business, so therefore that is all we have for you this evening.
Okay, this time we'll open Citizens Open Forum. If you'd like to address City Council about anything, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. And you have three minutes to address City Council.
Hello, my name is Regina Ware and I stay at 601 Lee Road 202, but I used to reside in Auburn off of North Raw Street. But I lost my house, me and my family lost our apartment. We was homeless for like two years, no, six months, I'm sorry, for six months. And in the midst of that, a lot of stuff had happened. We was living in different hotels. So Mr. Joe over here at the church, I went to him and he helped me and my family got a place to stay for about two weeks, but it was nice. And now we are current living in Salem. I love Auburn. My grandson, he stayed with my cousin, he would be attending school in Auburn. But like I said, I did used to live here and I hope that the grant that he can get will help the people like me because as me living in a hotel, I have seen a lot of people homeless like when I was there. So my bill was like $1,000 for like two weeks. And I stayed at the state I hear about on South College. But the grant will help a lot of people, you know, that were with childrens. And so along with that, I had tragedy in my home where my granddaughter was killed over on South, I mean, said shooting joy. She was just a month old, a year old and her daddy shot and killed her. That kind of fell into place in my household along with my mom dying two weeks after that. That kind of put me in a place of homeless because we had to pay for two double funerals at one time. So that's why, you know, it's good to kind of consider it of getting help.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yes ma'am, sorry for your loss, thank you for speaking to us tonight. Who be next? Yes, sir.
Joe Davis, 311 Lancaster Avenue, Auburn. I want to say a special thank you to Ms. Regina Ware for sharing a little bit of her story. The executive summary in tonight's CDBG report states that Auburn's homeless population is driven by crisis events. And Ms. Ware's experience shows just how devastating those crises can be and how common they can be. So again, thank you to Ms. Ware for her courageous testimony and to folks like the Alabama Rural Coalition for the Homeless, ARCH, and others who supported her and her family during that time of crisis. Her story puts a human face on Auburn's growing housing challenges. And I want to thank Mr. Al Davis and the community development staff for including data in that CDBG report about homelessness, data that we at Auburn United Methodist submitted at one of the public hearings. But I want to briefly highlight some of those data points. The United Way of Lee County's 211 hotline received 146 homeless calls from Auburn in a recent 12-month period. That's about 12 per month. ARCH received 378 Lee County referrals in that same 12-month period. AUMC was able to help 24 households, but far more reached out in that same timeframe. The One Voice Transitional Home in Elizabeth Place Transitional Home, both in Opa- Lake, housed 23 Auburn women and children over that timeframe. So feeling the weight of that, of this growing need in our community, Auburn United Methodist partnered with ARCH in 2024 to apply for HUD's Continuum of Care funds. And I'm thrilled to share tonight that we're being awarded $143,000 to launch the Good News Rapid Re-Housing Ministry at Auburn United Methodist this fall. We'll be able to hire two new staff and serve about 20 Lee County households over the next year who meet HUD's homelessness eligibility criteria. We'll provide case management, housing search and financial help with rent and deposits, working closely with ARCH's coordinated entry system. More details about that are at amc.net/housing. But this grant won't meet the full need. It doesn't fund hotel vouchers for families while they wait or pay apartment application fees. It also won't be easy. We need landlords who will be willing to work with us and join our team and partner with us. And so I just want to end with three requests and that's, is there any way that the city can support efforts like these? Number two, I want to say that CDBG, as great as it is, is not enough for our community. Auburn also needs HUD's Emergency Solutions Grant funds. And so I would encourage us to work with Mr. Al Davis and his staff to address their concerns so they can apply for those funds next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Kathy Molnar and I live at 28th Estate Drive in Auburn. And I appreciate Ms. Ware's sharing her story too because it's a story that I've heard too many times lately in my work at Auburn United Methodist Church. And I want to also thank Joe for giving us the opportunity at the church to reach out to the community in so many different ways of service to those that are in need. And I want to thank Al Davis for his work with Community Development Block Grant and all of you who supported the efforts with Ms. Conway because to have someone like that have the ability to stay within their home, within a safe and protected place is so important. And there are so many other people like her that could use that type of assistance. Last week at our food pantry, I helped take calls and we open up at the first day of each month. And at the first day of each month, we expand all of our funds to help with utility and rental assistance and some hotel vouchers within a matter of hours, a few hours. And I know how important it is to help those. A lady came into our food pantry and she lives at Webster Crossing Mobile Park. She has a double wide that she owns, she's lived there since 2008. And the reality is, is that she doesn't know if she can continue to afford to stay there. There's a requirement for her to recite her double wide with final citing. The fees have gone up 400%. And here is a lady, and in that same category, Ms. Conway, who doesn't know if she can afford to stay and doesn't have any place else that she can afford to go. So I have a few proposals that I would like to put out there from my years of work and I've been in Auburn almost 50 years now. We know that there are many different partners that we work with. Many of those partners will be at the One Voice Coalition meeting tomorrow. And thank you Max for going to that meeting. And there's a whole list of those and I know some of those Al Davis knows. I know I need to hurry, I'm watching my time. Now, I would love for us to work with the Emergency Solutions Grant. That is something I did a training with, Triva Hadley also did. I know there's some concerns about how to implement it. I believe as partners with the churches and all the other agencies that we can help to get those grants to make up the utility rental assistance that we don't have money to do throughout the entire year. And we can talk later about that, Mr. Davis. So I would like to also offer in the few seconds that I have left, if we could consider working to try to get the landlords in our area to provide affordable housing and work with the new director with the Auburn Housing Authority choice, housing choice vouchers. I have a lot of ideas of things we can do with that and look forward to working with her and seeing if we can provide the kind of safe houses that we all expect and want to have. In Auburn, we call home. Thank you.
Thank you. Who be next?
Good evening. I live at 1216 Combs Avenue and my name is Johnny Dardell. I really want to thank the City Council and the City of Auburn for making it visible for us to make that turn off of Jordan Street on tomorrow Luther King. That's really, really a good help and I really do appreciate it. And I also would like to thank the city for cutting the grass over there in that area. It looks much nicer. And they told me that higher up, the state would be responsible for that. So if it's anybody here from the state, I thank you as well. It looks really nice there and I'm glad I'm living in the loveliest village on the plains.
Thank you, Ms. Johnny. Who be next? Yes, ma'am.
Susan Bolt, 1188 East University Drive. What are you waiting for? I've stood before this council for years presenting facts about Ordinance 3288, an ordinance that strips constitutional property rights from some citizens while preserving them for others. Neighbors living side by side are treated differently. One can offer short-term rentals, the other cannot. That's not fairness, that's discrimination. I've shown that the zoning in this ordinance was arbitrary. I've demonstrated that there was no widespread issue before 3288 was passed, meaning this ordinance was not necessary. I've brought to your attention how in Dixon versus the City of Auburn, Supreme Court Justice Bryan noted that the case was argued on the wrong precedent and he laid out a path forward that proves 3288 is unlawful. I've shared legal opinions like that of City Attorney Rick Davidson confirming that short-term rentals do not violate NC zoning and the no more than two unrelated rule. So I ask again, why hasn't this council done the right thing and repealed Ordinance 3288? What are you waiting for? One council member stated, there is not an appetite to revisit Ordinance 3288. That means that this council doesn't have the desire to do the right thing. What excuse will you use to justify your actions? What story will you tell your children and grandchildren about your legacy as a city council member? Will you tell them you fought to protect citizens and constitutional rights or that you trampled on them? Will you say that you stood for justice or that it was just too hard so you sat idly by and did nothing while their rights and your rights were whittled away? Many of you will not return to city council after August, the August 2026 election. You have until then to define your legacy. Will you choose honor and fairness or will you hold tightly to an emotional discriminatory vote ignoring the facts? If it's me that stands in your way, if my persistence or your dislike of my message is the obstacle or excuse you use, then be mad at me and put the blame on me and move on and do the right thing. I'll bear the burden of your ire, but don't let your feelings toward the messenger distract you from the truth of the message. Ordinance 3288 is wrong and it must be repealed. Honor and justice demand it. You swore an oath not to emotion, not to convenience, but to the Constitution and to the people you serve. So I ask again, what are you waiting for? Do the right thing and rescind Ordinance 3288.
Who be next?
Yes, ma'am. Hold on just one second. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, this is your second time to stand up.
Hi, I'm Linda DeWitt, I live at 1139 East Magnolia Avenue. I just have a couple of questions or maybe one question that's twofold and it is related to the recent ICE action here. My first question is, what is the Auburn Police Department's role with the recent ICE raids? And does a municipality have the option not to participate with such, such as an ICE raid?
Thank you.
I'm asking.
Well, this portion of the meeting is not for us to answer your questions, but we'll get to it in a little bit later.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Who be next? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Doris Spinks, how are you?
How are you doing, Ms. Spinks?
Fine. I live on 400 Richland Road and I'm about the third house when you turn off before you go on the divide. I just had one question to ask. Will you all be able to put speed bumps there? Will you all be able to put speed bumps there? Is the street too short? Is it too short a street? I'm trying to figure it out.
Sure, yeah, there's a lot of factors in that, Ms. Spinks. And we get through with everyone that wants to approach the city council tonight, we'll get you some information. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Uh huh. Who'd be next?
Robert Wilkins, 261 Denson Drive. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Public records request. I need the council's help. As an Auburn citizen, I just need the first seven months of 2025 for two line items, salary and employee benefit, also the number of employees added each year from 21 to 2021 to 2025 concerning the Solid Waste Management Fund. As a citizen, I've been trying to figure out the excessive accelerated expenses from 2022 to 2025. I have all the data except for 2025. From '23 to '24, Solid Waste Management Fund lost 1.4 million, and with 1 million of that in the two items that I'm asking for. With our expensive accounting system, this should take a few minutes by our competent management team. One council member said to me, I have no access to that kind of information. Well, our city manager has, on numerous occasions, said that she is the pleasure of the council. Maybe that should have been in the training material. As a citizen, I requested to another council member that the information is not in the same format as the annual comprehensive report, so that I can compare to past numbers. After a lengthy discussion, it was told, we receive the information you receive in that format. It isn't going to be changed. Then I made the statement, you're the council, and you can request it in any format you want. Then the council member said, I realize I can request it in any format. I don't need it in any format. I understand the numbers. I'm confident in the numbers. Then I said, I'm glad you're confident, but I, as a citizen, I am not. There's only 10 exceptions in requesting public records that you can't get records, and that's personal privacy, law enforcement, trade secrets, and national security, deliberative process, pending litigations, medical and psychological records, legislative deliberation, sealed courts records, and educational records. None of these apply to my request. Then why, as I a citizen, cannot receive the limited information on Solid Waste Management Fund? Our city manager and various council members say that the Auburn City financials have been fully audited. If you really want to understand what kind of audit has been done, take pages 25 through 28 from the 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, audit statement from Mansion McChesney, CPA and business advisor. Take those four pages to your CPA. They will tell you that the audit is not worth the paper it is written on. As an Auburn citizen, I just want the public record information to be fulfilled by the City of Auburn, and the council supports that request. Thank you.
Who'd be next?
Here is good news. The Alabama Public Library Service, APLS, voted to amend the Code of Alabama to include clear, enforceable definitions for what constitutes inappropriate material for minors. This move empowers all libraries across the state of Alabama to use a stricter and more practical standard to evaluate content in children's and teen sections. Thanks to the APLS's leadership, books containing explicit words or themes can now be reviewed and relocated, simply because of those themes or explicit words without needing to be evaluated as a whole. States, yes, they do have the right and the duty to shield children from harmful content. So thank you, APLS and Montgomery over there. Thank you, Hannah Reese over in Prattville for leading the charge. See her website, called Cleanup Alabama. She's been a lion in the fight of this war against really homosexual attempts to pervert the little children's reading material and the visuals that they're exposed to and lead them into a degenerate lifestyle. If I understand correctly, Auburn Public Library had until June, this is the month previous to this today, 2025 to comply with APLS's new guidelines to move harmful sexually gender-bending radical material away from the children's section. And I'll be watching. I'll be over there watching and looking at the books. And I do hope that our new library director will comply, or has already, and will not be a carbon copy of the previous director who filled our library with smut. I'd like to thank Sunny Mormon, Chief Dawson, I wish he was here tonight, Mr. Adams, Connie, Fitch Taylor, Mr. Griswold, and any of you who helped to block the tragic slide into degeneracy of our library recently, in the recent years. Mr. Parsons, Ward 6, and Ms. Beth Whitten, I can't thank you. You both welcomed P flag with open arms in this very room. They are a homosexual activist group. I want to thank Mr. Chris Hardeman, who spoke a few weeks ago, for standing up for Christian values, Alabama values, pro-family values, and the things we should be protecting. Thank you.
Thank you. Who'd be next?
My name is Harriet Huggins. I live at 631 South Bean Road. The library controversy has just gotten me totally, not only disappointed, but very, very angry as well. And I'd like to share with you what the bitter southerner has to say about what a library should be. And that doesn't mean that that information is going to carry over to the state. The lesson our libraries teach us is not that any one single book can explain. To understand a library, you have to take a step back from the individual book and look at the shelf itself, holding dozens of books. Then turn around and look at the room. The dozens of books on that single shelf will disappear into the dozens of shelves holding thousands of volumes. From this distance, the library shows us that a book is just one idea, one perspective, one life, one work of art on a shelf of so many others. A library doesn't say any single book is right or wrong. A book on a shelf in a library simply tells us, this is one idea among many. The library is a mirror to a democratic society. In the same way we don't count the votes we agree with, libraries don't only contain books that agree with one another. I could go in any library in this country and point out books that I think are wrongheaded or incorrect or simply bad, because there are plenty of them. This exercise simply misunderstands the purpose of a library. Were the advocates of book banning, which is what's being done, consider that any of that, what a library is, they might reconsider their efforts. But they won't, because they don't actually care about libraries. Book banning isn't about books and never has been. Again and again in history, we see that books are banned by people who seek to discriminate, to erode the rights of a group, to diminish their place in society. The movement to ban books today is one that seeks to discriminate against LBGTQ+ folks and diminish their place in society. They have always been with us. They have always contributed to the community, and now we want to punish them, and that's absolutely not fair.
I'm Sarah Collins. I'm at 875 Cohaba Drive. I know this isn't the first time that I have spoken on this issue, and I know it won't be the last, and that makes me incredibly sad. Mostly, I want to thank our libraries and our staff for making sure that everybody in the community's voice is heard. Like Ms. Huggins said, the library is a mirror that represents the community that it holds, a democratic society. We have all kinds of people from all over the world in our little town in Auburn, and that makes us stronger, and that makes us better people, being able to love our neighbors as ourselves, being able to recognize that just because we don't hold the same political or religious beliefs as another person, that we can still see them as people created in God's image. That is powerful, and that's what a library allows us to do. It allows us to see other people as people. It allows us to see ourselves reflected in literature. It allows our neighbors to see themselves and their families reflected in literature. So really, I want to thank the library, the library director, the library staff, you all as council people, for upholding a public service and making sure that it stays public. Thank you.
Who'd be next?
Who'd be next? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Kathleen M. Justino, and I live at 1203 Hickory Lane. And I would just like to follow up on the questions about last week's activities with federal forces in town. I realize that this is not a setting in which this can be discussed right now, but I would strongly request that the city government does let the public know about any discussions that are had about the role of the city government, including the police, in federal activities regarding immigration, that you practice full transparency so that the citizens of this town can be as prepared as possible, and to keep in mind that not only are we a community of families who are here locally and reside here, but we're also a university town, and we have a lot of people from around the world here. We have a lot of scientists who are engaged in international activities and international exchanges of information, and that might give our town an extra level of vulnerability about which we want to be informed and prepared. Thank you very much.
Yes, okay, thank you. Who'd be next? Okay, we'll close Citizens Communications. Ms. Crouch, Ms. Spinks was asking about speed bumps. Is that a better conversation to have after the meeting, or schedule time to meet with her?
Councilwoman Taylor had reached out to me with concerns. Right now, I'm working with the city engineer based on the classification of that road. We're looking at some things that don't allow us. Richland Road on both sides of Sugar Jordan Parkway has a certain classification that, by our own rules, does not allow us to do some things. We had looked at a raised crosswalk that kind of had failed. We're looking at other options. In the interim, while I'm doing research with the city engineer, Police Chief Cedric Anderson and I communicated today, as a matter of fact, that we're going to be putting some speed trailers out, and we're also, we actually have two police officers in this room involved in this. What usually happens, and he's going to stop me if I'm off base, or either one of them will stop me, is we do that for several weeks, depends on how long they feel is necessary. We're gathering some data, warning people, but then the enforcement action follows closely behind. So here on what a lot of people call Old Richland Road, which would be from Martin Luther King Drive to Judd Avenue, headed towards Sugar Jordan Parkway, do not speed in that area. We have a lot of residences. We have people walking around, so we're going to step up enforcement efforts while we look at any traffic calming things that may be possible per the request of the residents in that area. So we're on top of it right now, but everybody can consider themselves, the speed trailer isn't just a friendly warning. It initially is a friendly warning called, please drive the speed limit, but Auburn Police will be behind that after a few weeks with full enforcement. So, and that is going to get closer to the start of school and a lot more activity in the area. So, but we'll be out there in force.
I need to write that down. Where's that again?
It's Richland Road from Martin Luther King Drive to Judd Avenue.
And what is the board? And what is the speed limit over there?
25, and people are going a lot faster than that. And so, and this isn't the first time we've heard from the residents in the area, but whenever we do that, just anecdotally, you can always call the non-emergency number. You can email Auburn Police, say we'll gladly put a speed trailer out in your neighborhood or anywhere. This goes, not just major roads, it goes to neighborhood streets. They're happy to do that. That's what the speed trailers are for.
Ms. Spinks, I'm sure if you have any follow-up questions or comments, if you'll come up here after the meetings of a week, they can probably answer some of those questions. Are you okay? Yeah, yep, okay. Ms. Crouch, we had a couple of questions about last week. I know Chief Anderson is here tonight. Is there an opportunity for us to?
I hope Chief Anderson can provide a broad overview of why, what our involvement is and why that is, and there's a long-term ongoing investigation, but I'll have him address that.
Thank you, chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The events that took place on the 15th of this month, that was the result of a long-term investigation, a years-long investigation that was actually started by the Auburn Police Department. The scope of the investigation became so, so large, covering multi-jurid- jurisdictions, multiple states, that the FBI eventually adopted the case itself, which is why they were the ones that were running the operation that came back to Auburn last Tuesday. The request was that we assist them in executing search warrants here in Auburn at businesses and homes that were under the control of a target of the investigation. We have always worked with our federal partners. They have always worked with us. There's a relationship there that has been and exists forever. We depend on one another. We could not do a number of the things we do without their resources, and they, when they come here, they depend on us to offer assistance, and that's what we did. We cannot dictate what they do when they show up to do certain things. This, from our lens, was an actual criminal investigation. The ICE component of it was something that was attached to the investigation, because when you go in to execute a search warrant, you don't know who's going to be there, but a standard procedure for law enforcement is whoever is at a premises or a location where a search warrant is being executed. Everyone is detained until they're properly identified, and that's to see if they're a part of the criminal activity that's being investigated. So that is why we were there, to assist. To answer the question that was asked a little while ago, do we have the option to say we're not going to participate? We could certainly say that, but I think that it would have a chilling effect on any future investigations that we conducted that would have a federal nexus. We, again, depend on them to come in and assist us when we need it and provide the resources. The other part of that would be, if we were to say we're not going to assist, then we're not there to make sure things are done properly and to our standards. We want to know what's going on in our community. There's nothing that says a federal agency has to let us know when they're coming here to do anything. They could show up tomorrow and execute search warrants or do raids or anything else without notifying us, and I think that, based on the relationship we have with our partners, they're willing to include us and let us know, you know, what they're doing and the general scope of why they're doing it. There's a certain amount of information that I can't go into, because this is still an ongoing federal investigation, but our folks were there at these various scenes in a support role only.
Okay. Chief, the recent murder of a mom and a daughter, did the federal authorities help us catch the perpetrator?
Yes, sir. Within an hour of that investigating, investigation being launched, there were federal agents, US Marshal, FBI, in this building and across the state and into Tennessee, assisting us to bring that case to closure. to bring that case to closure.
And the same situation when Anai Blanchard was taken from us a few years ago, were the federal authorities helpful to us and eventually caught the murderer?
Very much so. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Chief Anderson. We appreciate your comments.
Yes, sir.
Anyone have anything they'd like to add?
On this topic or on other topics?
You go to another topic. It's closing.
Again, I would remind Ms. Shamp that she lives in a community of close to 100,000 people, and there's a variety of different people, variety of different cultures, a variety of different faiths. The claim that reading a book turns you one way or another, I can easily refute because I just recently borrowed a book on plumbing. I also borrowed a book on piano playing. Still not much luck on that front. I think we need to step back. As Ms. Harriet spoke, don't just look at one book in the same manner that you don't just look at one person. This is a community of people. People should be free to read what they want. People should be free to parent the manner that they see fit.
Anyone else?
Yes, I would like to piggyback on that. I'm not a plumber either. But I do want to put some of the speakers' minds at rest. This council does not ban books. I personally do think, though, that there is some age appropriateness about some books and that they should be placed in the appropriate section of the library. And if I persuade my colleagues of that, I would think that would be a move in the right direction, but this council is not in the business, nor does it ban books. So, rest easy on that one. I thought the speakers were eloquent tonight, and I think that Ms. Shamp, if I may, spoke in the same way, that there's some age appropriateness to some books. I wouldn't use the same language she uses, but I did want to make that point, and I, that's really all I have to say there. And I may have another item here if you pass me over right now.
May I just add to the city manager, in terms of the latest state legislation, does that have an effect on the way that the Auburn City Library conducts itself?
We have our very excellent, not as new as she once was, library director here, Cynthia Ledbetter, and I'll have her speak to that. Cynthia works very hard and has done an excellent job for us, and there's a lot to navigate right now, and I'll caution everybody that what some directives being sent down also have to do with state pass-through funding that has to do with the Horseshoe Bend Library, which this council dealt with. So, compliance with that is required, you know, beyond Councilman Mormon speaking about the council not banning books. There is purview of a library board. The staff is not suggesting we throw away state funding and not comply, but I can have Cynthia speak to what has been going on and where we are generally briefly, but yes.
Right. So, recently, the APLS, the Alabama Public Library Service, did set out some definitions for some wording in the state code changes that were brought about a little bit ago. And those definitions do, and those state code changes, apply only to whether you receive state aid or not. Excuse me. So, if you are in compliance with the state code, which we are, then you continue to receive your state aid, which we have been. APLS, the executive board, did send us a letter saying that we are, that our policies are in compliance with that. And so, what was the other part of your question?
No, just whether or not, what recent changes Ms. Shamp is mentioning have any effect on you and the responsiveness of the library to those changes?
So, the recent definitions, we are doing an audit of our collections, of anything in our children's collections, anything that is in our teen collections, to see if it does, in fact, have anything that, within those definitions. And if it does, we're just approaching it accordingly.
We're working very hard to comply with those things as they come out. I'll remind you also, because definitions haven't been clear on things, we're vetting with our legal team on a regular basis, and we're making every effort to comply with every directive that's being set down relative to this funding. A lot of that means not taking any books out of the library. They may shift in their location only, and that really has to do with what we call young adult. There's younger children's section, in essence. Some of that is a little bit clearer. The young adult is where it gets grayer, and a lot of things, the solution to that is you're not moving a book out of the library, you're just moving its location within the library.
That's correct.
And our staff, I'm very proud of the diligent work they're doing. This is a tremendous undertaking, and they're still serving our citizens at a high level of service while we do this behind the scenes. And again, to everybody's point, we're serving an entire community, so there's lots of opinions and things, and we're doing the best we can to navigate, and we appreciate it, Cynthia.
Appreciate your excellent work. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I got one other question about the Richland Road. I know that there are supposed to be, I guess, police going to be sitting out there, and especially when school starts and everything. So, we got a commercial development coming there. So, is the enforcement, is it gonna, is it gonna be, are we just testing something right now, or is it going to be ongoing?
Kind of depends on what the behavior of drivers are after our initial enforcement efforts. We learn from that, and police make decisions, and especially our motorcycle officers, they do a lot of traffic enforcement, and they do a good job. For those of us that live in other parts of town, Moores Mill Road from Sanford Avenue to about Dean Road is a very big hotspot for do not speed. You will meet an Auburn PD officer pretty frequently on that, and that is a consistent concern of the residents in that area. A lot of that is complaint-driven, so we will continue to address the concerns of the neighbors. So, enforcement, it depends on the behavior of the drivers and what feedback we're getting from the people who reside and traverse the area about how they feel about that.
Yeah, because people seem that, when they know the police is there or some type of speed devices put out, well, it's going to reduce. But once that goes away, then it starts right back again. So, that's what I was wondering, especially it being a school going in that area, and then we, the commercial development is coming there along with the neighbors that have been there forever and ever. So, I just, I just hope, you know, it's ongoing.
That's why I would say, don't just expect enforcement around this time. It's any given day, up to police and what they do from a traffic enforcement standpoint. But we do focus efforts in areas where we're getting complaints as well.
I just don't want Ms. Spinks or Ms. Daddie back there. They's some beautiful young ladies, and I just don't want nothing to happen to them while the young, while traffic is going. Look out for them, please.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, Connie, it's a good reminder as we get ready for school to start back here in a couple of weeks to slow down, and, you know, we mean business when you get to those school zones, and there's always some lessons that have to be learned those first couple of weeks, so everybody needs to be ready now. If no one else has anything, I just, you know, I trust Chief Anderson's leadership, and I trust the men and women that work for our police department, and I really trust that they make the right decisions for the right reasons. And, you know, I don't, I don't want to get lost in all this, that there were drugs taken out of our streets that aren't going to end up in our children's hands. There was money laundering that was supporting a criminal activity. There were guns that could have hurt somebody, and that was done away with through this effort. I know that's not why people have asked the questions they've asked tonight, and I certainly am not blind to that, but those men and women that wear that uniform do a great job for us each day, and I know they make the right decisions on behalf of all 85,000 of us, and I'm thankful for that. All right, anyone else? Is there a move to adjourn? All right, we adjourn.